Okay, it's 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk may have a roll call and an establishment of a forum. Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw.
Here.
Barb Sats.
Here.
Mike Wagner.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Here.
Dylan Omenstein.
Here.
And I, here. Okay, I have proof of posting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, everybody.
Mary?
No, no.
Yeah, no kidding.
I just want to get to the candidates.
Any discussion on that? Mary Dunn, Isaiah.
Yes.
Mary Beth. Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And then in terms of public input. You're so rushed, you couldn't stand up and give your paper.
I must not ask. I'm sorry.
It's your turn.
My apologies.
Your job. Right?
My chair doesn't have wheels.
All right, we do have someone signed up for public comment tonight. And just a refresher, you'll have two minutes to speak. And at that time, we won't be discussing anything. But concerns will be brought forth to the administration and if so, at a further board meeting on the agenda to talk about it. So tonight, we have Kristin Westfall here. And if you would just please tell the group the municipality in which you reside, and then you'll have two minutes.
I'm Kristin Westfall. I reside in the town of Mazo Mani. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Wisconsin Heights Youth Self-Form Program. Our program regularly lures more than 100 elementary and middle school girls in the Wisconsin Heights School District each year. Today, I'd like to speak with you about the facilities policy that's on your agenda tonight. First of all, we are incredibly grateful to have access and use of school district facilities for our program. I attended the facilities meeting last fall, and we agreed as a self-form board that security is a priority. And we have worked together to ensure that we will and are following the updated policy. I am here today to ask reconsideration of the cage slash machine equipment fee of $25 per use. We are requesting consideration of splitting that fee for the cage and the machine as the pitching machine would actually be used very infrequently, if ever, by our program. And this fee applies both inside and the south gym for that cage, as well as outside. Specifically, the outdoor cage is a bit of a concern for us because it is located next to the visitor dugout, and we physically cannot borrow access to that. Therefore, essentially, we would need to pay the equipment fee for any games scheduled on that field. This summer, our estimates are at least 10 games for that field as we try to use it for our 7th and 8th grade teams, and we hope to have two teams at that level. Please note that we already covered the cost to pay someone to prep the fields for those games, as well as the cost of the chalk and paint for the follow lines of those games. Alternately, if we were to shift and use fields in Black Earth or Mazo Mani, we don't incur those fees at all. We do see value in using the high school field, and so we have incurred that fee in the past for specific games. While this seems like a small amount of money, it multiplies quickly by number of games or use. We strive to keep our fees as low as possible for our players and families. Our main, players and families, excuse me. Our main goal is to support player development with the hope of preparing players to play at the high school level. Personally, I went to a Division 1 school and never had access to the high school fields until I played at that level. It was intimidating. I think one of the major benefits of a smaller, community-focused school district is that our youth players do have access to some of these school facilities. And not only are the fields no longer intimidating when they reach the high school level, but our home fields feel even more like home. We would like to continue using the fields and would appreciate reconsideration of reducing or splitting the cage and machine fees so that finances do not become a barrier for our program to use the fields. Thank you.
Great, thanks again. And because it is on the agenda, we can talk about it later when we do get to that point. So thanks again for coming and bringing that to our attention. All right, moving on to minutes and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of February 10th, 2025?
So, sorry.
Any questions? Mary Dunn, Isaiah.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education Strategic Planning Workshop minutes of February 17th, 2025?
So.
Any questions? Second?
That wasn't her.
I'll second.
Are these the ones from the committee? Or from?
From me that to talk about.
Um.
February 17th.
Does that last?
It was Monday.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, just the Monday. Just as then. The board workshop.
Like what other?
That's what I got confused about.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, all right. Mary Dunn, Isaiah.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right. Moving on to our student presentation tonight. We have the Vanguard Racing Team here to give us an update on all their hard work.
Let's go. Well, fellas.
What would be fantastic is so we're recording it right there. So yeah, if you came either to, maybe to write.
We can move.
We can move, yeah, just so.
You guys got the floor.
Do you know?
Guys? Sit down, we've got some things to pass.
No, you're fine.
Well, we are the Vanguard Racing Team. I'm the president, Jacob.
I'm Dane.
So, Hunter.
I'm Dane.
And the vice president is not here right now, Dana. And a few others are not here. But let's first talk about what we did last year.
Uh, our first trip, our trip to Road America was pretty good. We got eighth place out of, what was it?
It's probably 16.
Eight out of 16. Eight out of 16. We did pretty good.
Who are we? We're there racing. And we started our race car from scratch. We get these blueprints. We do all this, create our own cars. Buy custom parts. We work on our own stuff.
What was it like going to Road America?
Uh.
What was it like going to Road America?
Um, it was, it was pretty nervous at first because we didn't really know what to expect because not that they'd been there before. Um, yeah, it was our first year. But once we got there and we got everything settled in, it was pretty smooth. We didn't really. Uh, we didn't really have any, like, major breakdowns or anything. So that was pretty exciting. Uh, it was just all around really good.
Um, well, let's talk about this year and what we're doing. We are doing a same scale, but about five inches longer, five inches wider, so. And we're doing the first ever diesel engine, diesel powered. So, still three cylinder. And we're doing about the same design, a little different on the A arms and stuff, but.
Okay.
Okay, just different.
Yeah, this car, we're hoping to have it either done this year or next year. We still got, we got like a bunch of, we got four parts and they're waiting all that. We also lost a couple team members this year. So we're down, it's around three. Three, three, three team members this year. So it's just us four and like three others.
What kind of engine is going in there?
Uh, about a D92.
Diesel? Yeah, he talked about it. Yeah, so you've had a lot of great sponsors for the diesel engine. We had partial sponsorship from, from who?
Last community.
Well, no, at Fair Valley Performance, right? So they're a diesel engine builder. The community support that this team has received is just, for me as a parent and as a leader, has been really, really fantastic. And, you know, I'm proud of these team members for coming here and talking to you guys and talking about what they're doing. Are you guys excited about building a race car? Yes. You guys are curious. They really are.
I know.
Okay, all right. We just wanted to show that to the crowd, that you're excited and, you know, trying to do innovative things. Every one of these young people that are here or on the team are really pushing themselves knowledge-wise and experience-wise, just the welding and just the mechanical pieces and making them all fit together. There's, there's so many things that are going on with this project. It really is kind of hard to imagine unless you see it. So we start from flat, you know, tube steel and straight steel and weld it all together is pretty amazing. And it's made them have to do math. We call it shot math. It's kind of constant quizzes for me. What's this fraction or what's that? So don't you love it? It also forces them to have to present in front of potential sponsors always. What's been your guys' favorite part of the build process? Each one of you, what do you guys think? What have you liked the most?
Um, I like, I, I like cutting the parts mostly. It's pretty easy.
Um, I'd say focusing with the engines and all the fabrication welding.
Like all the fabricating, making designs for like cage clusters or parts we need, like welding and, yeah. I'm just like a big time, I'm not a fabricator.
Um, my favorite part is probably the fabricating too. You kind of have to, like, think about where stuff is going to go and like, you have to design your own parts. Uh, and I just, that's my favorite fabricating part.
And the last question is, who's the best driver? I don't know. Okay, well, okay, you guys have some consensus. It's on this side of the room. Actually, they're, they're some pretty talented drivers. They were really close, so.
So what are you doing with last year's car?
Racing again.
You're racing again?
That's awesome. Yep.
Nice.
There is some, um, some things they want to do to the car to make it better.
Roll cage.
So, yeah.
So I can actually get a car?
So there's going to be some changes to that car.
Nice.
Yeah. So the one thing I'll, I'll let Mr. Hopper speak to it, but he had the experience of he talked to another teacher in the program. And last year, you know, we started the team. We came to you guys. These guys worked really hard, made it happen with the help of, you know, leaders and Camden Stop Word from PI and some engineering help, but lots of support.
Community support.
Community support. But with that, we built that car in a year and raced it. And what were you told when you talked to a teacher in that program? That typically it's a two-year build for a car. Like, not very many high schools can put out a car in one year. Only the ones that have been doing it for several years can do it and have bigger populations to feed from. Um, so, yeah, we got a lot of eyebrows raised.
We say it time and time again how impressed we are with the donations that are coming in.
Thank you.
Yes.
And they continue to come in. So it's a testament of your hard work. It's not easy to get up in front of a room of people, so I give you credit for doing what you're doing now, but also in front of community members asking for money. That's about the hardest thing you can do is to ask people for money. So kudos to you guys for, uh, for the continued hard work on that.
Thank you.
It takes, just to let you know, between $15,000 and $18,000 a year. And they go out and get it. We're, we're at about $12,000 right now.
Wow.
Let you know, we're still looking for sponsors. And, um, I mean, you can't, you can't replicate project-based learning. Can't do it.
Will you be able to race the diesel with the other cars? Or is it a separate class of racing with other diesel cars or?
Yes. It'll be prototype, but we can somewhat race, like, time race them, uh, other cars and get a placement of.
Yeah, these are all time trials. So this isn't wheel-to-wheel racing, like, yeah. It's best time wins per category. Any, we, how many do we have now? We have like eight team members now?
Eight now.
Yeah. It's a big time commitment. There's a lot going on that our students have. So we've had some students that have chosen to do other things. But this is our core group here, so. When's the next Road America, though? This May 12th and 13th.
Can we talk about the 107th Club?
107% Club.
Yeah.
Can you please talk about that?
There you go.
Do you remember? No, no. I quit. Um, 107% Club, what we realized, if we can get 107 donors to commit $107 per year for three years, all of our needs are met for the next three years. And I think $107 is a lot easier for us to be able to write a check for. So if we can do that, it adds up for us, so.
Well, and no successful club can have success without the leaders and advisors. So thank you for all the time and. Parents a little bit, yep.
Parents that show up with treats is, you know. Yeah, and give us a little bit of support just emotionally. It's a grind. Yeah, and we meet Tuesdays. Go ahead. We meet Tuesdays and Thursdays every week from, you know, school starting basically until May. So it's, you think about like seasonal sports, they need more often, but it's not that whole year-long commitment. So these guys really put in a lot of work. Yeah, as we get closer to race, race time, it'll be Saturdays and Sundays and Wednesdays and Fridays. It gets down to almost every day in the last few weeks, you know. The car gets built the last two weeks.
Mr. President, do you get to do anything special on the racing day because you're the president or?
Um, not really. I get to let other people drive.
Ooh, that's what they usually.
Do any of you think that you'll pursue a career in fabrication or car mechanic or?
Yes. I am, starting to.
Awesome.
And you the furnishings.
Right.
I am. I am.
If nothing else, a hobby forever.
Yeah, and these guys have great exposure to, like, some of the, Camden, the engineer that helps us into engineering. He came from Flatbough originally. He went to C W Flatbough. And he was part of like their clean snow program and kind of the same type of thing at the college level. And so he brought that skill and that knowledge to these guys so they get an exposure to, hey, maybe an applied engineering program would be a really good thing to do or something like that. So there's lots of opportunities in technical skills. One of our other members has said that, that she really wants to go into a technical field now based on her experience. That's what she told us last year, so. So, yeah, a lot of good things.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Round of applause. Thanks for coming and.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
You can wheel on in the other, uh, whatever, whatever it's raining.
Um, I can leave this available, that slideshow.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you for.
Thanks, guys. Great job.
Thank you.
It's hard to go after that.
I know. And we're hoping to have more of those student presentations as the student voice continues to be at the heart of what we all do. It's really motivating. I hope when we can get them in the room. So that's great to see. Moving on to reports, um, I'll just give one more shout out to Dale for the Career Fair. Had a chance to stop in, and it was just really cool to see a room full of people and excited about next year's opportunities as so many of them were, were saying. So thanks again for all your work. And otherwise, we'll. I'm sorry. I'll pass it off to.
Perfect. I'll just share a couple things from my report. Yeah, Career Fair, I would say, yeah, Dale knocked it out of the park, did a great job of just bringing community members in, and the students really had a great time. I'd like to say too, like, kudos to our administrative team that they met with some of the students, each to grade levels, before they sent them in to the business folks in the Career Fair. So that really helped generate conversation and some of those skills that you need to, to have when you worked with folks. So that was great. Um, kind of priorities, progress that are going on. We're, Derek and I are having budget meetings with all the key leaders in the district. So those continue for the remainder of this week and into next week. So that's been nice to just kind of forecast what folks need and what we, sort of the goals that we have for the upcoming year. We're working on a compensation model. We're finalizing the compensation model for our teachers, support staff, and now beginning one for our advisors and coaches. So excited to do that. Handbook conversations are continuing to go on. Um, calendar, where Dale and I are working on, looking at our, we have our 26, 27 calendar. And one of the goals that you all had as a board, we've had it as a district, is to try to get our staff some more PLC time, but making sure it's effective and it's successful. So we put some surveys out to our staff to find out what they, what their needs are. We got that feedback back, and we're meeting as an administrative team tomorrow to really look at that and decide what's going to be the best route for us and kind of get creative with those strategies once, once we have their feedback. So we're hoping that at the next board meeting, we'll have that calendar to share with the board. Uh, we're still looking for a crossing guard. So if you know anyone, we would love to, someone that's retired possibly or just has a couple extra hours on their hands. It's a great, great job.
What spot is it at?
Um, but you'd be at, it's for the middle high school, so it'd be before school and after school, with the stop sign, just directing traffic, smiling, um, high-fiving children. It's great. So our administrative team does, does a great job right now with it. But we're looking to, to fill that in. And then another just key thing, we're with our safety planning, we have the opportunity to send a team to one of the, so we work with the I Love You Guys Foundation with our SRP protocols. Uh, we worked with Middleton and Menona Grove, and they invited us to be a part of their training. They brought someone in from I Love You Guys last week on Monday. So we sent a team there, and then we're planning with that group. And then on March 21st, we're bringing every, our whole district, it's an early release day, so our whole district, along with EMS, fire, bus companies, a whole bunch of local leaders are going to be over at the Grove going over our reunification plan and what our strategy would be if we ever had to go into that, administer that. So we're excited that we've, we're getting lots of training and really coming up with a solid plan for our district.
And to extend an invite to the board.
Yes, and you'll be, I'd like to invite, you'll get something formally in an email from us, but for the board, you want to join us on that March 21st date as well.
Absolutely.
So Dane County Sheriff will be there. Great time to talk to him too. So that's it. I mean, there's other things, but is there anything specific?
Any questions? All right, great. Thanks for the update. All right, moving on to presentations and discussions. 6.1 will have an update on our Infinite Campus roll out.
Yeah, just an update. We are going to move forward and adopt Infinite Campus for our student sport system, replacing Skyward. Kept you guys in the loop, but I think started the conversation, you know, late October, early November. And so it's been a process. All the stakeholders had an opportunity to have a voice, see parts of Infinite Campus. We've had presentations, our event team, we've had multiple discussions about it. So Derek Branton and I met just last week, went through the budget end of things, and we're in good shape to move forward. So we're going to do that. We're hoping to have the program make the transition. In a perfect world, the switch will happen actually right on July 1st. So we got a lot of work to do between now and then, which is the data changes. But you still have anything to add to that? That was, that's all my update is, just kind of letting you guys know we are really good feedbacking staff. I will say, you know, overall overwhelmingly positive. And I think just change is, is, you know, even for myself, just something new is a little scary sometimes. But I think after you look at the program and you talk to other people and other schools, you know, they love it. And just haven't, we haven't had any pushback really from staff. There will, I'm sure, be some frustrations along the way. So next year, we'll kind of be living in two worlds, with Schoology and Infinite Campus. Been very open with the staff. Our plan is to keep Schoology on one more school year, but we're going to phase it out throughout the school year next year. So that gives the staff an opportunity. Many of our staff members have all of their things in Schoology. So as they go along throughout the school year, they'll be able to answer all of them as they teach their units into Infinite Campus. So the communication piece will be important for our parents, just how that'll work. So, you know, a lot of things to work on with that. But, you know, I think they're going to be a good partner. They contract through CISA 5 for most of our training. So we work through CISA 5 with the training for Infinite Campus. So they have both schedules, how we put that in place as well. What questions do you have for us?
So some of the stuff that we were just talking about, like sports registration or even a lot of the tasks Melissa does, that, that will be simplified, to my understanding, right?
It could, you know, her system she brought on this year seems to be working really well. So we haven't had a firm discussion on that, but I, I think the intent would be everything runs through Infinite Campus. That's our goal.
So how does the information get transferred? Is it manual or does it just kind of happen?
The techie people make that magic happen.
Like wizards, right? Derek has the wand.
So there's an upload piece and, you know, they need to upload multiple years of data, so that's a big process in itself.
Is it going to be one unified, like, portal that parents are going to be referring to? I've heard from parents that there's multiple spots they can find grades, multiple spots they can find when homework is due, and so it's hard for them to totally know where their students are.
If they log into Infinite Campus, even if the teachers are putting their grades in Schoology, it syncs. So when I've talked to other school districts, it syncs well, they haven't had many issues. Skyward, lots of issues with that, but Infinite Campus seems to sync better with Schoology. So even if the teachers are putting it in Schoology, as long as their parents log into Infinite Campus, they should be able to get what they're looking for.
One spot for it.
That's our goal.
Right.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And our teachers really like that idea, too. And that was part of the discussions we had as a staff, because they hear the frustrations from parents, too. They're just like, oh, so frustrating for parents. And some of our staff have kids in all three buildings, so they see it as from the parent end, too.
And I would say some of our staff have kids in other districts that use Infinite Campus and they really enjoy that instead of overusing.
Yeah, that was some powerful feedback that we received, you know, our staff that have kids in other districts. They love it as a parent.
Something to look forward to. Any other questions? All right, thanks Dale.
Yeah, we're excited, it's a big transition, but we're excited about it.
So maybe end of July, we could have a run-through of what it looks like and sort of keep it out. Awesome. All right, great, we'll move on to policy, 7.1, do I have a motion to approve the Title IX technical changes?
So, second.
As a reminder, because they're technical changes, we don't need a first reading on it. Any questions? All right, hearing, do you want to say?
Oh, I mean, is this the discussion part?
Yeah, sure.
No, I would just say, you know, because this is, it's been a hot topic in the news and such. So ultimately, this policy, us making these technical changes, our, we just bring back our old policy, which is the same policy about non-discrimination based on sex and education. And this will not change anything about how we treat kids or anything we do differently in our district. It just basically says that the current policy is vacated, so you just can't use it from the federal government, so we just have to go back to our old policy, which, once again, covers everything that we've been doing anyway, so.
I just appreciate you taking the time to say that. I think that especially for parents and students who are keeping track of their own classes and their own lives, for you to be able to say that although we're taking this action, there's not going to be a change. And I can't speak for everybody, but anybody can speak. I don't think there's anybody on this board or in the administration that is looking to change our stance on, we empower all students here from all backgrounds and however they show up at this school district. So I'm thankful that you took the time to go through that, Michelle.
All right, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, 7.2, our beloved facility use policy is on the agenda again.
Not going to be. And.
I'm not sure why I can't see it on here, but.
I can add one thing right away. Well, yeah, okay. So, we changed the, so the group, the fees did change for group number two, they went down, as well as offering complimentary four hours a week to that group number two. Also, just want to make sure I get, say the right numbers, we split up the cost, so the batting cages are $10, and then if you have the machine, the pitching machine, then it goes up to 25.
Okay.
So we split the fees.
Okay.
That is in the new application. So, and I think that, right, addresses the question?
Yeah, for the most part, other than the fact that we can't really borrow access to the outdoor cage, so we essentially just have to pay it every time we use that field.
Because it's like, there's not a lock on it.
And there's no cameras out there to mine.
Right? That's interesting. And it's starting to get used before.
That could be one that they applied for exemption from.
Right. I can't understand why we can't figure that out.
I do have a question, if you wouldn't mind adding. Like, so, did you guys help, like, did the baseball and softball clubs help build a batting cage over at Mesa?
We did. We recently completed a new batting cage this last year that the youth baseball club and the youth softball program co-funded, along with some sponsorship from some organizations that helped donate some time and equipment.
How much was that?
The total cost after those generous sponsorships was $18,000 for a two-tunnel cage. We currently have a one-tunnel cage in both locations.
Does the high school use those?
It is my understanding that they will have the ability to use those when they play their home games at the Mesa Mani Lions Park this year. And we have no intention of barring their access to them, but they are certainly available to them. And then for practice.
So the high school's not paying a fee to use it?
Not to us.
Well, if that's the case, then I think that we should allow an exemption for the youth players to use the fields out there then, correct? Well, I think it opens the conversation, too. Certainly, we talked about anytime you have a new policy change, you kind of go through these things, because your intent and purpose on having the policy change maybe doesn't wholeheartedly tackle what, you know, these things are about. And the same goes with the basketball, the youth basketball program and their donations back. This is not to stifle opportunities for kids specifically with regards to our local youth and rec programs. And I know we've, we've had these conversations, but about adding an asterisk somewhere in certainly, from where we started to where we ended now with, with some of this stuff and to giving free time for community members, but then at the end of it, having our youth programs suffer and pay the cost for even, it seems.
Disruptive.
Well, and it's not how we intended this policy to even begin.
I look at this as that's the prime example of why we still have the ability to have an exemption.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
And to me, that's just, yes, it's a form you'd have to fill out, but it's, it's an easy form and then the admin could approve that pretty easily and it's taken care of.
All right, since we're using the high schools using that one, they can use it.
I agree, but I thought we were saying no one was exempt from the tools or the equipment, right?
Unless they apply for exemption.
There's still some.
I thought our understanding was that you would get exempted from the space fee, but that the equipment, there was no exemption because when you use it, it's wear and tear.
That'd be the third tier. Or is it all across?
I think Dylan's.
The way it was presented, the facilities, the equipment, the acquired property.
I agree.
If the high school is going to be using their facilities.
Yes.
See, that's the problem. We started with paying for gym time and equipment to then say, no, let's not have anybody pay for gym time and then let's only have them pay for equipment. Which, to me, right, doesn't get at the heart of.
My thought on this is, is there is wear and tear all the time on equipment, and I think we all agree on that.
Right.
But we're not getting, we're, we're in an agreement already with youth clubs. They're fundraising, they're providing things back. So is it possible through this current policy for the administration to agree that they are providing payment to us in kind because we are using their batting cages and have that as a written agreement between youth programs?
Right.
And Wisconsin Heights as a district? Because then, you know, we're still acknowledging wear and tear is important.
And I think that's where that administrative, you know, exemption kind of falls. Because the way it reads to anybody is unfair and say, well, now I have to come forth and be vocal and ask for it. I think it should not even get that point, it should just be the youth rec programs that are building and developing programs for our students should be innately exempt.
Sorry, can I tell you one more time?
The great thing is that this is the facility exemption application, which is not a board policy, it's just.
Yeah, we do have to rewrite it.
We can just rewrite it, it doesn't have to be, so we can approve the policy change.
Yeah.
With the other ones that we came with.
And really, the intent was, you know, if I am renting out the gym and I'm going to use the batting cages, there's a little liability for a community member that maybe isn't innately aware of how to use it and structurally, the wear and tear on something when you aren't working and living in that.
It's just, there's such a, there's such a big difference between our, our youth programs that are affiliated with our incoming students that are going to be, you know, in our school, you know, involved with our sports versus a community member having their own, you know, sports leagues outside of this. There is that, there is that huge difference between the two and we all recognize, you know, that difference between the two, so.
And I think the policy itself was meant to contain more of that overuse.
Right, absolutely. The overuse of.
Just to safeguard this whole.
Yes, yes, and I definitely think we all agree that, you know, there is that line, you know, between those two different parties and that's where we needed to kind of get that in check. Because, you know, you wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't quote-unquote being overused by, you know, those outside sources versus, you know, those that, you know, should be allowing, you know, we should be allowing to, you know, have those youth sports.
Did you?
Well, I just want to, because the policy as written says there's no exemptions for
The policy or the form?
For the equipment fee, there was in policy, what I remember, there was no exemption.
It's in the, on the exemption application, but I don't know if it's in the actual policy.
Oh, okay.
It's on the application, though. Because we omitted a lot from.
Policy itself, which is exemption.
Put it on the form so that the administration can make changes, or we can make changes and updates to the form regularly without having to go back on policy.
If that's true, then great. But I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, we did make a lot.
That in the policy exemption is swamped.
I think it's just in the exemption, it's in the exemption application.
Really, Ben, if it's not, we can re-change.
I don't think it's in this, but.
It was great for you to come in and tell us.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
I don't see it, but I'll, I guess what this is for.
We'll make sure.
We'll approve, we'll make sure. Just to get it done, sorry.
We love, we love talking about this every morning, we do.
If this is the hardest thing we have to talk about, you know.
All right, so we, did we underchange one yet?
No, I will make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other questions? We'll make sure it's written that way, though, Dylan, and if we have to bring it back next time, we will fix that. And then even, even if it is, let's do an update on the form at the next meeting, just under discussion, so that we're all familiar with what the exemption form now reads. Perfect case. Dylan, you go with that, or are you still reading?
That's fine.
Okay. Table. All right, moving on then. Much, sorry, okay? Isaiah?
I know.
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Awesome. So then, we will move to district business donations. Do I have a motion to combine 8.1 and 8.2?
So, second.
And we're approving a donation of $500 from Latitude Graphics LLC and $500 from the Wisconsin River Sportsman's Club, both to Vanguard Racing, a thousand more dollars for that group, really exciting. Isaiah?
Uh, yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, we have Alex and Jim on.
Alex and Jim, are you?
Thanks, Kristen.
I think we're ready for you. I'm going to wait until this door shuts.
So.
Uh, we have Jason rating it, well.
Okay. So Jason, Alex and Jim. You might not be able to, the board is kind of sitting to the left, so you might be able to hear them, we'll try to speak loudly and then we'll drive any questions your way.
Got it.
All right, this is just finalizing some discussion on our secure front entrance. We had an update with some, hey, guys. With some groups and decided to stick with PSI. And so we saw their updated bid and proposal and are going to go ahead and approve that tonight. What, what sidetracked into a different discussion was the canopy, which I know we all have been talking about. For a long time, it would be really nice to enhance our main entrance so that visitors primarily know which entrance is our main entrance. And so that discussion kind of went around a canopy and maybe some lit signage to make that more noticeable and some of the conversation then spread to wasted space in the entryway and if we're touching the canopy, what are some other options? And so for tonight, the recommended action is actually just going to be approving the secure front entrance and omitting the canopy and vestibule design for a little bit later, only because we just didn't want to rush into anything. And so on Friday, when Alex, the lead architect, was kind of looking for some discussion on what is possible, I know we had talked about utilizing that space better for our athletic programming and our concession stand and the flow of traffic. And so that was one of the things that was kind of teed off to him to look at. Now, there's also a bit of this that if you move the secure entrance outwards and it's an enclosed space, then some of the money from this proposal kind of gets shifted to that arena. So we're going to go ahead and approve a not-to-exceed on the secure entrance, but knowing that some of those dollars could then later be transferred into the canopy option, depending on what, on what is chosen. And so they're joining us tonight. If anybody has any questions on possibilities for an enclosed space, I'm not sure, did the renderings get passed around? Did, was everyone able to see the renderings?
Great work, thank you.
I saw them very briefly, okay. You have them in your email. So if there are any questions, they're joining us now for that purpose, but obviously, nothing's being decided on tonight because we, we want to get it right and if we're spending the money, we want to make sure we do this right, but also give it some time to see if we can afford it and if it's in our budget, right, Derek?
My question is, I don't know if you all can hear me, but my question is, the timeline of everything and just making sure that the entrances can be completed if we do a more comprehensive redesign of the area, is that something that you all are concerned about?
No, I don't think we're concerned right now, Alex, you can take over if you want. Our timeline is still set for this summer. If, in those designs that Alex and Jake kind of put those together extremely quickly, just to give you guys an idea of what can be done if we enclose that entrance. But if your goal, or if you want us to take a deeper look at that, we can and kind of design it to what you want and give you some more ideas and I think we're still good on timeline, construction-wise. Alex, you agree?
I would definitely agree and, you know, we can share, we're prepared to share our screen. I don't know if you have a chance to take a look at the floor plans I sent, Jim, I don't know if those got in there. But we can talk about those. The, the idea is, concept number one is about, don't, don't hand me on this, guys, it's about roughly about 900, 950 square feet. The concept number two is about 1,500 square feet, so we're not talking about a large area at all. And so we're, we're confident that it can get done. Obviously, the more of education we'll have to move fairly quickly, if, and if you want to give us some direction on that specific part. The rest of it is definitely under control. So hopefully I made some sense there.
Yeah, and I think the primary task was just looking at the functionality of the space, not a complete redesign, is to say if we're actually enclosing it and we have a bunch of extra square footage, we want to make sure we're using that to the best of our ability and in terms of functional space. And so I think since we have these renderings, since we're all together, we'll probably walk the space tonight and kind of cross compare with, I guess, some of the options that you put out there. And in terms of, you know, the other piece of this was making our choice fast because of materials and the changing markets and that we don't want to sit on this too long because if we do table this to next summer, the price probably will drastically change. Are there any other?
Yeah, sorry, would you, would you like me to put the floor plans on the screen and pick up?
Yes, please, yeah, if you have those, that'd be great.
Okay, let's, let's, right. Are you guys able to see them?
Yes.
Okay, so the image that I'm showing you right now is your existing conditions and obviously, we're trying to figure out potentially capturing this square footage, whether it's an exterior square footage with a canopy or a combination of interior square footage with a canopy. And so I'm going to share, Jason and I have been working on a couple of concepts here. Again, real rough sketches, but it gives you an idea of the thought process. And, you know, number one, having an identifiable entrance and a secure vestibule is obviously of utmost importance. And one of the things that, things that we looked at is, you know, having the approach really start with, with some exterior camera. really start with, with some exterior cameras, or, or physical, physically being able to put eyeballs on somebody as they're walking into the building. Uh, and then you would have, uh, number two, which would give you some restricted access doors, and an AI phone, that you can look at an individual person. And obviously, those will be secured. And then, which gets you into what I lovingly call my parent trap, right? You could, uh, you could technically get, get stuck in there as a secondary security measure. And then number three, you, you would be bussed in through all these doors into the reception area, into, and then you would be, your identity would be verified. Number four really shows you that, that set of vestibule doors will always be locked. And obviously, on the way out, in case of emergency, that's not the case. So, what then, what this particular concept does is, it's modest, and it's the most cost efficient, which is important to us. And, uh, it obviously tries to, uh, straighten out that, that entry. It, it pulls the entry out a little bit, uh, so it's more visible for the parking lot. The other thing we talked about on Friday is, uh, you know, having a place or concessions and a ticket office, that is a little bit less awkward and more conducive to lines of people waiting for their tickets or hot dogs. And, uh, we also talked about popcorn or whatever, and, you know, maybe potentially using that commons area up a little bit more efficiently. So we can go back to this one, but I wanna review the secondary, the second concept. I'm gonna go back and forth here just once, so you can kinda see the difference in size and layout between the two. The second concept, um, it, it's important for us to make sure that the identifiable entrance and secure vestibule sequence does not change between the concepts. Obviously, um, having that approach, you know, it starts from the parking lot, down the concrete sidewalk, restricted access doors, verified entry, and the locked access doors. However, uh, this particular concept really tries to remove, I'll bet, I'll bet it's a little bit more expensive, uh, more square footage, tries to remove that, that weird entrance angle, however you wanna call it. It attempts to straighten out that front entry, so it, it does, uh, that very well. It, it also includes a concessions room or area, uh, with a ticket office or ticket booth. Very similar to the other one. Obviously, these are a little bit larger, only because we have, uh, a little bit more square footage. But other than that, uh, conceptually, conceptually, it looks the same thing. You have a little bit more room for a waiting area, uh, but that's really, that's all. And it does give you a clear, clear shot into the commons area, uh, very similar, uh, concept one. You get a straight, straight shot in. So that's where we're at, this, uh, does anybody have any questions? Uh, I think this is our super quick concept sketches.
I think, um, the challenge would be if the concessions, if the ticket office is on the other side of the concession. I'm not sure that makes.
Because then if people are lined up for the concessions, and people are still coming to get tickets, you're crossing, and then they're gonna miss a lot of those.
And that concession can go in that narrow wedge. Or that, sorry, the admissions can go in that narrow wedge before they get to the gym.
Yep.
Because if they wanna come in and just buy concessions, it's great.
Yeah.
That was the only thing that stood out in terms of the flow, is that the tickets should be first.
Yep.
Can you actually go back to the, on the first one, the concessions were before the tickets?
No, I was saying, it would just be about as you walk into the gym, you pay the admissions. So they're right there, so they're away from the food, so the food's further away from the door, because that's where people get jammed up at.
Would you show concept two of concept one?
Uh, concept one, please.
Yeah, concept one, the concessions were after the, or the.
But if I'm, if I'm coming in.
No, no, that, that makes sense in this one, that makes sense in this one.
And they're all lined up, and who's gonna be able to check?
For this rendering, it makes sense.
Yeah, not for me.
Yeah, I don't.
Because all the.
No, no, what she was saying made sense.
He makes, doesn't make sense, but it did not make sense.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was like, uh.
Sorry, sorry. Go back to what she's saying in this one.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the second one, it's like, you could reverse it, because it's right before you walk in to the gym, it keeps people further away.
Okay, if you wanna click on concept two, please.
Right. And then where that concession is.
You're saying, like, just cut it up.
Just cut that out right there, make that, the admissions as they walk in the gym doors.
I agree there.
And then, and then it's like, because then it's right there, and then you're keeping few people further away with the food, away from that door, because that's where everybody gets in trouble, they get jammed up by that door.
By the door going into the gym.
Yeah, by the door going into the gym.
Keep it far away.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Little teeny tiny cutout door for admissions, though.
How many?
I mean, they have a table.
And we're just gonna. Right, and you, I mean, generally, how many, you don't usually have, you don't usually have two.
I mean, honestly, it wouldn't even have to be a room.
You're gonna have the two ladies in there.
They would love that.
They would love that, they would love them. They're great, and I love them to death.
And I tell you what, when you, when I get scheduled to do admissions.
So. That's the only guy I would change on this one, that works with you.
So Alex and Jason, I don't know if you can hear us talking about, um, on concept two, would be putting the ticket office closer to the gymnasium, and then having the concessions and traffic more out towards the commons area. Just because with those main set of doors, uh, it tends to get bunched up with the concession, um, traffic. And so if you can move that away from the doors, uh.
So I like the window, like the ticket window would be on that, on that angle or whatever, so that way they can see anybody coming in, and they would, they're very visible to the spectators coming in that, hey, this is where the tickets are.
Yep.
So we, uh, if we understand correctly, we'll, we'll figure out the architecture with, but essentially, you'd wanna flip the concessions and the ticket office.
Yeah, yep.
Correct, and then.
We'll work it out. Now, did I hear, did I hear somebody say that, um, potential window into the ticket office should be on the handle?
Yes, correct, so you could almost save room for the concessions stand by just making a triangle of sorts, and then having the window jet out at an angle for the ticket office. Let's try to verbalize it.
Yeah, damn.
Angie has one more.
Angie, no, you're fine, I'll wait.
Yep.
I actually almost think in that one, that it should all be shifted down, and have that ticket window be right, should be, and, and that window should be in line of sight when you come in the doors. So you come in, you come to the ticket window, you buy your tickets, you leave, then concessions. You know what I mean?
Well, they don't have to buy, because they can come in and buy concessions without going into the gym and not paying it in.
And it's just the traffic pattern, isn't it?
I still worry about having that little corner, because what happens if there's so many people there? Somebody could just walk into the gym.
They're gonna walk in anyway.
They could anyway.
They're gonna, I mean, we're not jumping out, I mean.
The point is, though, what happens is, people, as it is now, congregate because of the concessions. Where this, if you swap it, it gives no reason to congregate by the door, they're automatically gonna go out to the commons area where.
Cause I think, yeah, here, they would come out here.
And they're gonna be.
And then the other thing on top of that is, is like, sure, you have a concessions window on one side facing like the commons area, and then maybe a smaller window facing the study area, so you can do, for larger events, you can do a little bit to win or pick like that.
Yep.
So if both of them are accessible, they don't always have to be used, but they could be accessible if you have eye volume, eye volume concessions.
You will just get, though, with this, flow-wise, people going to concessions saying, I'd like two tickets to get in, please. Because. I don't think, you're gonna have a big thing, it's just tickets.
Who comes in and buys concessions and doesn't? Seriously, Mike? That's a moot point.
No, but I, just my point is, because the door.
You're going for the popcorn.
The door is different now, because when you walk in the main doors, you can't see the ticket office if it's on that corner.
Yeah.
You're not gonna see the.
That would be, that would be, that would just be my thing, is like, if people are coming in for an event, that would be my only thing, is like, then they won't know where to go. That's my only thing, because if, like, that's my only thing, because if they're, if they need to go to the south gym.
Okay, but let's be real, do we even need a ticket office?
If we follow them, we would.
I, I mean, do you put up, I mean, you always put up a table.
What if we also, I mean.
I mean, I don't know.
But everybody's walking into the gym doors right there, you're gonna pass the ticket office right there. I mean, that's the way to enter the gym.
We need a ticket office.
For like the youth events and stuff like that, they wouldn't be able to use the ticket office.
Right.
So they'd still have their own table out there.
Yeah.
So for anything, because nobody's gonna, like, even if you go down to the ticket office, you'd have to go to the south gym, which is just that hall.
Right, so that's my point, if you're gonna set up a table somewhere, do we just use this more for tables, like extra tables and seating? Do you even need to have?
I would take it on this. I would say on some other point, that this option seems safer to me than the other one. Yeah. For line of sight.
Yes, absolutely.
And really, I mean, it got at the heart of getting rid of that weird space, which is actually, but.
Yes, because the other option still has the weird space. The other option still has the weird space.
And like I said, and so Michelle, like I said before, it creates more common space. So in a fence, we can, we don't have to have people standing in the cafeteria, but if they need to eat, there's more common space there.
So, my question is, if we move forward with this expanded concept, is that something that you're gonna be able to elicit questions on? Oh, we're kind of doing a flow reconstruction, what's your feedback to the community? And do it in a speedy enough way, or is it, we've kind of got to decide, this is the design? I think we have to decide.
I think we have to decide, but I think, like I talked to Bill today, and we think it's important that, once the board decides, we'd really like to investigate this, that we sit down with people that are best, like, Bill and Melissa and Liz, like get some people that have been, you know, or, you know, that have been part of this flow, to really nail down this, and then move forward.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, don't forget Cheryl and Pat, our two ticket office.
Well, they told me that they want a ticket office.
Oh, there we go, alright.
Great.
I'm telling you, I just don't like the whole corner weird.
For what?
During the day, it's an office where you can work with kids, and at night, it's a ticket office.
I just don't like that corner weird thing.
That is the main office, isn't it?
No.
It's not, would it be the?
That's like the nurses.
Well, I don't know, right now.
Student services.
It's.
Right now, it's a little bit.
Anyway, I think that's a good idea for me, Michelle, I would like those folks to have a discussion on it.
Yeah.
For this specifics.
Great. And I've been, Barbara and I were talking about this, asking community members, and I've been at events, and be like, oh, what do you think about? We're thinking about this, or, I think you've been soliciting information, you know, feedback too, as we make some of those decisions, but.
Well, I think option one would be the early, because I don't, I don't think any of us like that one.
Yeah.
Sorry, Derek, cheapest one's out.
It still has that weird entrance.
It's not going to.
Alex and Jim, is there, do you have, like, a tentative, like with this second option that it seems, people seem to like? And I know you, you've said, oh, we can try to, you know, you tell us what you wanna spend, and we can try to make it work, but do you have an idea of how much more over the, I think right now for the secure entrance piece, it was like seven hundred, eight hundred thousand? So, to add on this concept, like how much more-ish?
Yes, so, um, we, we knew you guys were gonna ask that. So, so right now, uh, like I said, uh, the first concept is roughly nine hundred square feet, the second one's about fifteen hundred square feet, and the range, uh, is going to be between four hundred and call it four seventy-five, five hundred a square foot, for that portion, which, which in my mind is enclosing this area. And, and that's actually part of the reason why, um, I kinda looked at, at this right here, so we can all kinda see it, and understand what we're looking at. I'll show you in a bit here, buddy. Okay, here you go. So, that's the area right now, and it's through the outside. And you can see we're, we're enclosing quite a little bit more. And then, uh, I'm gonna go into the first option here. And you can see, uh, we're enclosing, uh, a little bit less, right? So that's the square foot difference between the two. But the range does fall, it's the same, there's really no economy of scale, because it's such a, a small range of square footage. So, both options would fall between the four hundred and four seventy-five. And again, you know, we just got wind of this on Friday afternoon, so we haven't really had a lot of time to investigate it in depth, but that's a good range.
And.
And obviously, the range that we gave you a week and a half ago, or two weeks ago, that Jim talked about, that's just a canopy only, so obviously, you know, there's some additional cost to the canopy itself, but whether it's indoor space or outdoor space, you still have that covered roof area, uh, so that's not gonna change too much. We have to take a look at the three concepts and circle back with you. But that's a good range for you to kind of mull over. Did I answer your question?
Could you stay?
Well, I think, I think it's hard, it's hard, we're gonna need a breakdown, because at the, at the point that you're taking and changing the secure entrance, then obviously, the initial quote, there could be some dollars shifting there. And then, considering now it's enclosed, the canopy amount is shifting. So there are three breakdowns, and I think they're shifting enough into each other, it's hard to just have a range, a range, a range, and actually conceptualize how much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Again, you know, this came up Friday afternoon, so having a little bit more time to dissect it would be beneficial for all of us.
And I, and I think we're drawn to concept two because of the flow. When it, maybe if you can do two concepts, with concept two, maybe limiting the square foot, just for comparison purposes, to say, well, you could save this if you limit this, or, I mean, just for the board to have, I guess, a couple more.
Yeah, exactly, I'm not gonna be able to change much on that, uh, just because, again, you, you got this weird angle, right? So, I guess, look at potentially, you know, maybe shifting this over a little bit more. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Right, and, and there's, there's so weird stuff that's gonna go on here with the existing walls, I'm gonna just quickly flip over. Right, you've got this, you've got this goofy corner here, uh, that we're gonna have to contend with. And then this line right here that I'm tracing, that's the line of your brick facade that's covering that canopy, right? So everything inside of here is technically already captured, it's exterior space, where there's a roof over it.
Sure.
Where this right here might be, uh, this is brand new.
Yeah, I see.
Right.
I see, it's the current.
Right.
You gotta do a roof then there.
Oh, we can, anyway, we can, we'll put a roof on the canopy.
Not the same type of roof that you would have to let an enclosed building.
The canopy's more just a aesthetic.
One of ones off, it's not.
Not structural.
Tied into the roof of the rest, technically, the most heavy dollars in there. I, I think that option, we can try and stay within the roof line, would probably be your most cost-effective, correct?
Right.
For sure, yeah, I, I think, well, let me, let me show you. This isn't the finished rendering that you guys have seen. The finished rendering is this one, and I can navigate through this as well, but this is a little bit... Actually, do you guys see it or no?
Yeah, oh, well...
No.
You guys can see the rendering?
The machine said no.
Nope.
I guess not.
Okay, let me share that. Hold on a second. Okay, can you see this?
Give it a second, there we go.
There it is.
Yes, there it is.
Okay, so it's not the finished rendering, but it's the model that I used to get you the pretty picture. You can see, not that the roof is going to be green, but this is that line that we're talking about, right here where it turns white on the right and green, that's your existing roof. And the thought process is, again, to keep this cost effective, is to just continue that, that roof structure.
Right.
Okay? And both of those, both of those schemes wanted to actually take care of that as well. So they keep it, they keep it the same, that same roof line. Is that screen? Can you? Okay, let's get to that one. Okay, so that's this area right here.
So it keeps the same one?
Option one and option two, it stays the same.
Okay.
Yes.
But this is all extended, right?
Yeah, right.
So that's...
So you're saying above the secure vestibule, the current roof line does not get extended for Concept Two?
It does, both options, it gets extended. Just not as much.
I see what you're saying.
And then the canopy is a whole nother, a whole lot.
So this, if you guys will see my screen, in the existing plan, actually, hold on a second, this is somewhat off a little bit, it's actually, let's call it somewhere here, okay? If I grab that and go to, let's start with Concept One. Everything inside Concept One, except the canopy, is under the existing roof line. More or less?
Yep.
Okay? If I go to Concept Two, about half of Concept Two is outside the current roof line. And what I mean by half of Concept Two is enclosed square footage. And that's the difference between the 900 and 1,500 square feet.
Well, at this point, I think it would be handy to just have a little bit more thorough breakdown of if this, then this, and obviously, we'll touch base with Derek and go through the Fund 46 expenditures and the list, and have some conversations about what's within the realm of possibilities.
Yes, we will definitely have our estimating department take a look at all of these options, so you can see what the difference in cost may be.
And we can always have a special meeting too, so once we get things finalized and communicate, we can have on Zoom and have a special meeting to get this wrapped up. So we'll be trying as hard as we can to make decisions in a timely manner.
Okay, yeah, the experience.
Does anybody else have any input now that they're on Zoom, as far as likes, dislikes, preferences?
I mean, I really like that straight across concession area, like regardless of the design.
Two windows, maybe?
Because it keeps it from being, like, yeah, it just like, yeah, the design, the main drawing point is that concession and ticket office in Concept Two. He designed it, that's why, great job.
And I think having a ticket office cutting off that triangle space, I guess, solves that weird triangle. I mean, essentially, if you're going to have a triangle room that works, having a little ticket office area. All right, okay, I think that's awesome. Thanks, really appreciate you guys being on tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be in touch.
There you go.
Oh, okay, oh, that's okay. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, we can talk about...
Sounds good.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Did you guys have any first impressions? I mean, I shouldn't ask the money guy.
Your thumbs.
Ticket office, it's questionable to me, I just said, you know, I don't know the other schools, you guys get to more schools now than what I used to, but most schools that I go to...
It's kind of 50/50.
Yeah. Okay, well, to be continued then.
Yep.
And so we'll just touch base as soon as, do you want to still approve the front entrance?
I think we should, just so you're sure, or no?
I think maybe we should get a dollar.
It's kind of irrelevant, we're not approving a dollar amount, we're not approving PSI the way it's written. Thoughts?
I'm fine with a special meeting, if even only four people can make it, as long as it's something along the lines of Concept Two and within whatever you think is...
I would just like to get a better idea of what the secure front entrance is, if we're doing something else, so that we just keep tabs of what those numbers are.
The way the dollars are mounting.
I agree, absolutely.
All right, so we'll table that then. But we are continuing with PSI for contracted work, so we can make that known. So then moving on, future meeting dates, so we'll connect for a special meeting in regards to the facility updates. And then we have two meetings scheduled for March, no committee meetings yet, or present?
Technically, March 24th, the wonderful spring break might, would be where we might want to have a policy, but no one will be here.
Right. We'll figure that out, okay.
I'll talk with them and see if we can...
Okay, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Discussion, Harry Dunn, Isaiah, Mary Beth, Mike, Matt, Dylan, Angie, yes, I vote yes as well.